Good evening. This meeting of the Planning Commission is called to order. And will the clerk please call the roll?
We need to confirm the compliance with the posting?
We have complied with the open meeting law. And it was properly noticed and posted in City Clerk's office, County Government Center, Las Vegas Library, Grant Sawyer Building, and Boulevard City Hall Plaza. And if we can please do the pledge this evening? All items or all actions on tentative and final subdivision maps are final and lists. An appeal is filed by the applicant or an aggrieved person, or a review is requested by a member of the City Council. Within seven days of the date, notice is sent out to the applicant unless otherwise indicated during the meeting. All other actions by the Planning Commission are recommendations to the City Council, in which case, all final decision conditions and stipulations or limitations are made by the City Council. Any item in this agenda may be taken out of order. It's a short agenda night. I don't think we're going to be taking anything out of order. This meeting again was properly noticed. We are live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Madam, would you please call the roll?
Chair Truesdale?
Present.
Vice Chair Ellsworth?
Here.
Commissioner Trowbridge? Not present. Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Goins?
Present.
Commissioner Evans?
Present and accounted for.
Commissioner Flankis?
Here.
Thank you.
I call your attention to the information printed in the agenda concerning our actions and appeal and review processes appropriate. Please read those carefully, and if you would refer to the Planning Commission meeting rules of conduct, if you're wishing to speak before the commission, please review those. Do we have a motion for the minutes of the January 14, 2010 Planning Commission meeting?
Move for approval.
Any comments? If not, please cast your vote. And that is approved. Now we go to our public hearing items. First item number six, SUP 37017, applicant Calvin Peterson, owner Kimatrik, Fortson et al, for an auto repair garage, minor with service bays, doors facing the public right-of-way at 1501 West Casey Road, or Carey Road.
Mr. Chairman, staff is recommending denial of the request due to the chain link fencing, which is aesthetically incompatible with the surrounding development, and also due to the fact that the special use permit cannot meet requirement, condition number two of having the service bays not face the public right-of-way. And therefore, we recommend denial of this SUP. Good evening.
Is that mic on?
Good evening. I'm Calvin Peterson, and this is Ms. Robbie Fortson, owner. As I stated in my application, I believe that, you know, having an auto repair service there at this location, I believe we can provide a need for the community, which is not there at the present time. And I believe we can, you know, and actually, I'm asking for a waiver for the stipulations as far as the minimum requirements for the garage door facing a right-of-way, and also for the chain link fence. Number one, especially for the chain link fence, it actually leads around behind the building. I would prefer to have a, keep that fence there for security reasons. People, you know, congregating up behind the building, it would definitely deter people from going in and, you know, trying to break into the building if it's wide open. And also, I've noticed, you know, just being up there, how some through traffic try to take shortcuts through the property from Carey to Martin Luther King. And that would definitely deter cars from going in behind the building and, you know, possibly injuring or hitting someone, or hitting a building, or whatever. As far as the fence area, as far as bringing it, you know, there can be a covering to actually cover the build, the chain link fence. You can get the non-visible covering that can go all the way to the top of the fence. The wooden pieces that you see there in the one photo, all that stuff can be removed from the fence and taken out, and you have the, there's a covering there right now, but it's, you know, it's not, it's not up on the fence correctly, properly. We can, you know, put it on there and definitely maintain that it stays in place.
Thank you. This was advertised as a public hearing. If there are any here who should speak on this item, please come forward.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Is this existing building going to stay, or is it going to be torn down for a new building?
What we're looking at is an existing facility.
Is it going to be fixed up in any way? Or is this going to be the permit, or is this what we're always going to be?
That's what we're here to find out. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Then we'll close the public hearing. Before we go, turn over the commissioners. Mr. Rankin, this building has been this way for many, many years. And is there, are we requiring them to repave this lot, re-landscape, or anything like that? Are we just looking at this use based on an existing building?
The request is to re-tenant the building. Previously, this was a auto repair facility, which has been vacant for more than one year. Therefore, a special use permit is required. There is a condition of approval, requiring that the chain link fence, if it is to remain, shall be repaired within 30 days of approval and maintained in good condition thereafter.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Goins?
Just a couple of comments. This building is about 44 years old. I think it was constructed back in 1966, and it's always been an auto repair. But one of the concerns I have with it is looking at the Martin Luther King Carey area, and actually, the corridor. And I believe, our last Planning Commission meeting, we just approved parcels to the east of that, I believe, to be C1. And looking at this area, this area is in transition, and we're looking at this as the gateway into Las Vegas as you come from north Las Vegas. I discussed this with the applicant today as well, so I just wanted to put that on the record that, for disclosure purposes. But we did discuss it, and I explained to the applicant that this is a transition area, and we're looking in this gateway to enhance the visibility of coming into the Las Vegas area. And my feelings are that this use has had its day, and it's time to look at putting a more viable use on that corner. It's an old building. I just don't think it does it any justice to put a new coat of paint on it. I looked at the site plan, and, you know, some of my concerns are the fact that the bays face the right-of-way. The ref's rooms are entered from the outside of the building. I just think that leads to a lot of misgivings and trouble that could transpire. I understand that the owner of the property has a pretty stringent lease that she has provided to the applicant, and I appreciate that. But I think at this day and time in 2010, that we're going into a different direction in this area. One of the things I did explain to the applicant was, the last applicant on the parcel to the west, after we zoned that, he and I have had about two or three conversations, because one of the things he wants to know is, what does the neighbors want in the neighborhood? And he has agreed to sit down with the West Las Vegas Advisory Committee, put together a number of folks from in the notice area, go throughout the neighborhood, and hold a series of meetings to discuss what could go on that corner. And I think it's important that all property owners in that area come together in this collaboration of effort to enhance this intersection. And I've asked the applicant to join that as well. But if you ask me tonight, does it see my approval? I will be following staff's recommendations for denial because of the fact that the service bays do not face the right, that they are facing the right-of-way, and they should be the other way, and the fact that the chain link fence is not aesthetically pleasing.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Ellsworth?
I have some questions for you. Is it possible to wall off those bays and access the building from the other side? Could you put the bay doors on the other side of the building?
Well, you know, it could possibly happen, but, you know, it would, you know, the cost of having those bays, you know, moved and, you know, walled off and all that, it would be a substantial cost. I don't know if, you know, if that's one of the things that we might look at and, you know, maybe get some estimates on how much it costs, and, you know, see if we could do that.
Commissioner Goins, is your concern with the placing of the bay doors, or is it more a concern with the actual use on this corner? I mean, we just faced the opposite lot at our last meeting, if I remember correctly, about some zoning issues, but are you concerned about the use that they're proposing? Is that your biggest concern?
That and the use. The history of this building has been, that it's been an auto repair. The last tenant that was in there for a number of years, Mr. Rudy, to be honest with you, did not run a clean business. The business was more open after-hours than it was during the nine-to-five hours, and there were a lot of misgivings going on at that location. I also have some concerns about the environmental studies on the property. You know, is this garage prepared to do minor auto repair? When we talk about oil changes, radiator flushes, starters, do they have the proper drainage for oil collection? And all these new requirements that have been required as the code has changed over the years, does this site meet all of that? I spoke with the owner, who explained to me that she had some type of study done, which was required as part of her package to procure the loan through her grandfather's trust. I haven't seen that. I haven't seen what that study said, but I have some concerns about the fuel tanks and all the givings on that property. It's been there since 1966. It's 44 years old. What we're talking about is just putting a coat of paint on it and reopening it again. And I have some concerns with that, especially with the direction we are trying to go with in that area for the future.
My name is Robbie Fortson. I'm one of the three owners of the property. As I spoke with Mr. Goins today, I did express to him basically a brief history of that property. That property was in trust. My grandfather passed away in 2005. The property went into trust. My sisters and I purchased it, obtained a loan and purchased it out of the trust, and bought out the other person that was also involved in the trust. Also, in 2007, we shut down Rudy's. It was not in March of 2008. It was in 2007. It was May or June. We had an eviction done, and had that location, and had Rudy's shut down because of the activity that had gone on there for years. We had no control over what took place there. Again, that was our grandfather's property, and whoever he had conducting business there, and what took place, we had no control over it. So what we have done, we have talked with Councilman Barlow in 2008 in regards to doing something with the property. We also talked with a, actually, kind of just ended a deal with a developer that we tried to work with, who could not get a commercial tenant to come onto that location, which is something that I also explained to Mr. Goins when I spoke with him. I do have a report that was required, that the bank itself did, for a Phase 1 environmental site assessment on the property. The tanks that were there, the underground tanks had been removed. They were removed sometimes in the 90s. They were put in in the 80s, and they were removed sometime in the 90s. It's in the report. I do have that. Again, this is just a property that we figured, until we can get something together as far as developing the property, making it viable to the neighborhood, that temporarily or meantime, this property can be used instead of it continuing to sit there. To use it for what it has already been used for, we just don't see what, you know, other than the bays, which is something that, you know, we're finding out about, and the fence, we don't see why it can't be used. It's been sitting there, and it's not that we haven't been trying to move forward and making something happen, it's just that what we tried did not happen, and has not happened yet. But we're not giving up on it. We're still working towards that. So we're just asking that you take that into consideration, that, you know, we do want to see some other things happen in the community. We live in the community. We've been there all of our lives. So it's not like we're coming in from out of town just to start a business or to, you know. But what has gone there, as I told Mr. Goins, we were not allowed to go on there, as I also told Mr. Peterson. That's something we will not have, is the late-night hours that were going on and all the other things that took place. That's just not, that's why we closed Rudy's down. That's why we made it a point to contact him and to have an eviction done. Other than that, we could have just left it going on as it had been for over 20-something years.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask you a question? Commissioner Evans?
If, have you contemplated what you would do if this does not get approved?
We will just continue to work on trying to figure out what to do with that corner. As I said, we worked with, we tried working with the developer. They couldn't get any, they tried with Panda Express, they tried with Subway, they Jiffy Lube, Perfect Auto, to get someone to come to that location. And they weren't, maybe it was their marketing, I don't know. But, you know, we have tried, and we will continue to try. But meanwhile, we figured, since that hasn't happened, to just go ahead and lease the property as it is on a lease to Mr. Peterson. And meanwhile, we continue to work on some type of development for that location.
I guess my question is, I'm wondering if it would sit empty and shuttered? And then, secondly, do you have a long-term plan? That, is this something that you anticipate would operate for a few years, and then something else would occur on that site? Or is that something you're prepared to discuss?
Well, actually, our lease with Mr. Peterson is a five-year lease. And again, we are just trying to find out basically what would go there on that corner, what would be viable for the community. And in talking with Mr. Goins, he did express about the gentleman across the street that got the permission a few weeks ago, whenever it was, for the C2 zoning, I mean, for the C1 zoning, for the parcels that he was trying to get all-in-one zoning. So, and working with them, but those things take time.
Right. Mr. Commissioner Goins, I'm curious. It sounds like you were offering the applicant to perhaps go back and talk with some of the stakeholders, and see if they couldn't improve the site plan, and then you would revisit it. Is that pretty much what you were saying?
Yes, in a sense. And this is not my area of expertise. I'd like for Commissioner Truesdale to chime in on this as well. When, you know, and what really kind of sealed the deal for me on this is when the applicant said, I had a developer who went out to businesses such as Panda Express, Subway, Jiffy Lube, Burger King, and all of them said no. And the reason for that, my own personal opinion, is it's the stigma. Okay? It's in the heart of the community, it's in the heart of the black community, and the thought is, the way that area looks now, they're going to rob and tear my place up. And I'm not putting a Panda Express, and I'm not putting a Burger King, and I'm putting there because that's what they're looking long-term. My thought was, since we have now a great opportunity with a developer on the other side, who has called me three times and said, hey, look, I know you beat me up at the Planning Commission meeting, but I appreciate that, and that made me think. I'd like to sit down, I'd like to take a group of people through the community, I'd like to hold a series of neighborhood meetings with the people that will utilize, and ask them what type of use would they like to have. And I think if you have one corner that looks nice, I think you may have a developer on the other side that may reconsider and say, hey, look, this is nice on this side of the street, this is not, this could be nice on this side of the street. Now the area is changing. And I think if we can get a consortium of property owners to sit down and work together in harmony, I think at the end of the day, we could, we would probably get a viable and profitable for the property owner, a use on that corner. Because right now, the owner has no long-term plan. So I think this will be a great learning process for the owner to sit down and work. And, you know, Commissioner Truesdale, I know you've developed a few corners in your days, and am I going down the right path?
In some regards, let's face it, the market is the market, and that's what drives what will go there, what's best positioned to be there. And, you know, everybody meaning well will come up with great suggestions, but still, someone's got to pay the rent each day, and they got to do that. The application before us, I'm disappointed, because with all the history on this property, I would have expected you would have been before us with, here's all the things we plan to do to get your support to do that. We'll re-landscape this, we'll do this, we're going to, we're going to do more than just paint the building, we're going to change direction here. I'm not saying that this isn't a use that may be still appropriate, but nothing, the level of special use, nothing's come before us that says, this is it. And it's not for us to design it from the podium here. What I see before me, if we allowed for this use, would just be, five years from now, will turn into 10 years, will turn into nothing, improving that corner. So in that regard, I can't support what's before us. I'm not saying that there aren't some solutions to make it workable. You don't have, no property owner has to meet the demands of what somebody's going to do on the opposite corner. Each property has its own rights to try and improve theirs. But with the history of this thing, unless there's something significantly before us, I can't see us supporting this. At least, I can't support the use permit before us tonight.
Excuse me, I just wanted to ask one question, Ms. Forts. Did you say that you had a soils report done on this existing site recently?
It was done in 2007.
Do you have a copy of that soils report?
I do.
Thank you.
If there are other questions, motion?
Any more questions?
No.
Without that, I'll move to follow staff's recommendation for denial of Item 6, SUP 37017.
Commissioner Evans? I guess I just want to be clear that the applicant has no interest in pursuing some of those options at this point.
Well, what I explained to the applicant is what the process would be if there was a denial, that they do have the option to appeal it to the City Council. But I also reached out and told her that I will keep in touch with her and work with her as we go forward, and kind of guide her through this maze of bureaucracy that can sometimes be a little difficult to understand. So I just wanted to offer that as we go forward.
I was just kind of hoping that maybe we could get a better site plan and a greater level of comfort. And this being a special use permit, there's always the possibility that we could put a period of time, six months, a year, two years, whatever, to review it, so that we ensure that the community's needs are being met. But I guess...
But once you let someone go into business, and you, you know, they start making the investment, unless there's some significant reason not to let that business stay, we just kind of let this go.
And we have that right and opportunity, and we should exercise it. I'm just disappointed, because I'm not hearing anything from the applicant that you're probably not going to get my vote, and I want to find a way to vote for you. So I...
Motion's been made.
There's a motion for denial. If there are no other comments, let's cast our vote. And that item is denied, and that is...
Final action?
Final action, let's appeal to the City Council within 10 days.
Okay. Thank you.
10 days.
Thanks.
Thank you. Now we go to Item 7, SUP applicant, SUP 37068, applicant Lovett Companies, owner Spanish Villas at Sahara LLC, for a supper club within an existing 17,425 square-foot building at 3190 West Sahara Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, this site was previously approved as a non-conforming liquor establishment tavern. The business license became inactive on June 30, 2008, and the non-conforming status subsequently expired. The applicant is proposing a supper club that meets all of the Title 19 minimum use permit requirements, and can be conducted in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding uses. Staff recommends approval. Note that if this item is not approved, the supper club would not be permitted at this location. Please note, since publication, we have received additional letters of support and denial.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Howard Mann, and I'm here on behalf of Spanish Villas at Sahara, the owners. And I'm actually here to answer any questions that you might have with regard to staff's recommendations, and if we can enlighten you as to what actually is going to go on there, consistent with the rest of the development on that block. We've put millions of dollars into the office development, and this is part of that development, so it'd be compatible with the use. And with that, I turn it over to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. This was advertised as a public hearing. Anybody here who should speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing no one, the closed public hearing. Turnover commissioners. Commissioner Quinn, you got some comments?
I was going to let you guys go first, and then I'll...
That's fine.
...set up the deal. Thanks.
You said you wanted to, what do you want to do here?
We're here to answer any questions that you might have with regard to our request.
Can you tell me your business plan, and what you have planned for the supper club? What type of club is it?
Hi, my name is Craig Tiffy. I'm speaking on behalf of Lovett Companies, the applicant. What we would have liked to do is to modernize the property. We would like to put in a more contemporary, modest dining establishment, consisting of more of a tapas, family-style restaurant, light entertainment, giving it an internal, external facelift, bringing it into that environment of the rest of the community in that location. As Mr. Mann has already spoken, there's a little bit of a... As Mr. Mann has already spoken, there's a little bit of a revitalization in that area. We would like this to really be our flagship in that environment, make it a nice establishment for lunchtime activity, for business and coworkers, as well as evening restaurant, family, and community support. The facility also has a space downstairs which would allow us to do bat mitzvahs, bar mitzvahs, weddings, receptions, and really absorbing the community needs.
And so, this has a history and a past as well, where some parties at this place, I grew up here, so I remember when it, wasn't it Diana's Bananas or something, way back when? And some of these parties got so out of hand that they spilled over into the residence of Spanish Oaks and have caused some problems in there. How do you assure us that this will not be the case when the entertainment? And if you have an entertainment, how long will your entertainment portion of this business go till?
As the developers, we believe that perception is nine-tenths of the law, and if you bring in a modest clientele, we average the food fare to be between $8 and $20, mid to high-end cocktails, you're going to attract that type of environment. I feel on behalf of Lovett Companies that since this has been stagnant for some time, this is an opportunity to rebuild. There's a lot of great new businesses in that environment, that's really what we want to project upon and get them involved. There's a lot of social, business, lunching, and dinners that happen in that environment and surrounding businesses. So, as far as the entertainment, the entertainment is ideally contained within jazz bands, a little bit of a European and Asian band flair, but not rock bands. This is really a light entertainment opportunity for people to gather, listen, dinner entertainment. If there is going to be some sort of rock band or hard band, that would be through a special event that would happen downstairs or an outside party that would come in. Our hopes is to rival the new establishments that you would see in some of the newer restaurants at the resorts and some of the casinos that you see here in town, but this is primarily for a local establishment.
What's your track record in supper clubs? Have you done this before, or is this your first venture?
No. Brent Lovett, who owns Lovett Companies, has been an architect and developer by trade, bit Mandalay Bay, some of the restaurants and venues in there. So he has a history of development and dining and entertainment.
You might also want to address the chef.
Yeah, I don't know if you have a copy of it. Our chef is Natalie Young. She's currently the head chef at Hard Rock Hotel. Before that, she was at Paris for many years as the chef, has been a culinary instructor, and will be a great asset to the dining experience.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I would also like to add that the budget between myself as the ownership and the operator is over $2 million that we have to pour into the property to make it really a, when Craig said it's a medium style, we gave you price points, but to pour that kind of money into an establishment, we can assure you, the exterior, the interior, the clientele has to be representative to get repeat business and to meet the needs of the community and to be a successful establishment. I know Brett had indicated to me that there is a big need for community event locations that is, let's say, more realistic in price than the strip hotels.
Correct. Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Evans?
Those of us who've been around a while remember the Portt Act from 30-some-odd years ago, and I think many people in the community really liked that business model for the many years that it was run and run very successfully. And you also have a built-in clientele with several hundred folks in the Spanish Oaks community, I think one of the greatest communities in the heart of the city. And in my discussions with many of the people who live there, they are really yearning for a nice place to go to dinner that is near where their homes are. And nearby, you have the bank and some office buildings, there's, I think, a tremendous opportunity here. I don't know about your business model and how you intend to do, or what you intend to do. I will say that the most recent incarnations there, I think, were really flawed, but I think many people would really like to see something reopened there and operated well. And I don't know what you plan to do or how you plan to do it, but...
I might add that in considering this particular use, as you know, the building has sat vacant for three years, four years since I acquired the property, and the prior two or three uses were more entertainment-driven at night, lots of wild parties, and themes that weren't compatible with the community. Currently, in the environment that we're in, with our lender, we've run this all by our lender, and the use has to be compatible with the kind of businesses that we've been able to attract in the office development. We have the state of California there, we have a major title company there, we have an educational facility there to support the University of Nevada. And so, to complement the uses that we've done there, I built a brand-new building there for Dunkin' Donuts, as you are aware, and we want the improvements there and to spend the kind of, to make the capital improvements that we're talking about, has to have a model that would be compatible with what your comments were, Commissioner. It's not going to be a rowdy nightclub by any means. It would not be compatible with the community, compatible with our development, or would it be representative of the kind of capital investment it's going to take to be able to lure the kind of clients and clientele and events that the Lovett Companies want to have there?
Go ahead.
One comment before I, Commissioner Quinn, this property's always, and I know you've owned it for a while now, and when you came in for the freestanding building, the Dunkin' Donuts, was to go in, you know, we supported that. But this building has always been parking deficient as it relates to this project. And I tell you it's parking deficient inasmuch as Spanish Oaks Drive has been the overflow parking, which has been putting all of those people, as they leave, right in, and when this was run as a bar and other such items, right into the front gates of Spanish Oaks, created a lot of problems for the neighbors. It's a large facility, if, and if you're going to hold events like you're talking about, which I'm not sure if the use permit you're asking us tonight for gets you there for public meetings and such, I'm concerned about the parking.
I think that's a very well-taken point. I think staff went through and analyzed the parking that we have. Since we've totally rehabilitated the site, and I might add that we poured over $2 million into the site, we've reconfigured the parking, and we're in excess of the code on the entire site by 90 cars. And that the predominant operation of Mr. Lovett's concept would be in the evening, so that the business operations that I currently have in terms of offices operate from approximately 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. And so we have more than ample parking there, and if you look at the staff report, it gives the exact number, close, approximately 400 cars there. For a 16,000, 17,000 square-foot establishment, we'd have ample parking to accommodate on-site.
But aren't those 400 cars also used by the office building?
Not at night. And that 70% of the business is going to be at night or on the weekend, and our project is not used on the weekend at all.
Okay. Commissioner Quinn?
Yes, Mr. Mann. When you did the other development there, did you work with Mr. Lovett and his company?
When you said the other, the office?
When you developed the rest of it, yeah.
No.
No, so this is your first round with this developer, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. There's just a few concerns, and the concerns come from some past development with the developer. And I'm just going to let you know that we are excited about this project at our neighborhood. I've gotten many phone calls from people in Spanish Oaks, they want a lovely supper club here. And there's an old saying that we live by here at city, for the city and the planning, and it says that all city code requirements and design standards of all city departments must be satisfied. And I'm going to take just a few minutes to spell out each of those because I want them on the record for my councilwoman when it goes to council. First and foremost, C1 is zoned for commercial use in a supper club, which means there can be no, it can't turn into a dancing place or a girly place. Second of all, you must have a business license to open, it has to be in place. Third of all, you must have what's called occupancy, completion of occupancy before you open, it has to be in your hand, ready for him. Fourth of all, you must have permits for construction on the site while it's being renovated, as well as if you do renovations after the fact. So you need construction permits on the site for the city of Las Vegas to make sure your job can keep going. The other thing is, you cannot, like, take a generator or something and plug it in the wall and think that that's going to light your building. You have to have the electrical people from the city of Las Vegas come in and make sure that your electrical is up to code. One more thing, and that's the fire sprinklers. They have to be in place, and they have to be approved, not by the city of Las Vegas, but by the fire department. I'm reading these all off because in the past, we've had difficulties with certain people, and they didn't follow these rules, and we want to make sure that it doesn't happen at your property, sir. So this is completely out of respect for you. I know that building pretty well, and I remember walking down those stairs to go to a reception. Is there an elevator in that building, or are you putting one in?
I think that the, all of the items that you have enumerated here this evening is consistent with the building code and every requirement that the city has, per the conditions of approval we intend to meet with, as I've done with the complete office development that we have on-site, where we've renovated that property, brought it up to ADA compliance, and have done all those things that you've requested. And certainly, if a elevator, a new elevator is required, it'll be put in.
Okay. I just remember it...
And I also want to assure you, you're right, there is no elevator to get up and down now, so there would have to be one.
There were times I needed one to get back upstairs from a party, and there wasn't one in there, so I remember it.
But I do want to say that the, I have developed over 2.5 million square feet of commercial real estate in my career, and it's all been institutional-grade property, and in fact, have developed, owned, and operated a very successful 10,000-square-foot restaurant that was built over 20 years ago, that continues to be very successful in another city. And so that it would be our intent to meet and comply with every issue of the code, and certainly, the style, the look, the feel, has to be contemporary in order to draw in the clientele we want and generate the kind of revenues that's going to be necessary to support a 16,000-square-foot restaurant.
Right. So what I'm hearing is I have your word that you're going to make sure that this developer follows the rules of the city of Las Vegas, so it's just up to code 100%?
Yes.
Right on. Okay, one more thing. Hours of operation, you say that you're going to be, from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. will be the most part of your business, 75% of the business will be between 5:00 and 11:00. Does that mean at 11:00 o'clock, you're going to take your last dinner reservation, or are you going to be closing at 11:00?
I'd like to defer to Craig here.
Mr. Lovett still has intentions of having gaming, as there always has been in that environment. So it's my understanding that the facility will be open 24 hours?
Whoa.
A supper club with its limited gaming isn't a tavern, so...
Okay.
There we go.
And a supper club isn't envisioned to be a 24-hour operation, a supper club is a supper club. What you just described was the mindset of a tavern.
So he wouldn't have the gaming then?
Well, no, there's a gaming component with a supper club if you meet all the other requirements.
I think that...
It's five machines.
Yes, in fairness to Craig, Mr. Lovett is out of the country now, and he was very explicit when I asked him. I said, "You cannot have a gaming contingency in this transaction," and that whatever gaming that you had there would be limited to whatever would be allowed under a supper club, and we're certainly amenable to having you put that in as a condition.
Okay. And before I turn this back over to the other commissioners, I've heard, you know, what you're going to be doing and what, but if you get a use permit for a supper club, and you've got existing occupancy permits on this building, because it's been occupied before, if you don't do any work, any construction whatsoever, other than meet, you know, have the health department walk through, if I'm right, I mean, that's a licensing question, but they technically could be open for business and never has put a dime into this building, no matter what your representations are. And we could wind up with the same old, same old there, with no investment and the same problems. So you're, without having a whole history of operational history, you're asking this for a use permit, you're asking for a big leap of faith on this commission, I think.
I think, I'm not an attorney, but in terms of the special use permit and what we're, special use permit and what we're representing to you that we're going to do here this evening, along with the conditions that the staff has put here, says that we have to comply with all the codes, and as a condition of opening, we have to do those things. So that we couldn't, in fact, open under the scenario, if I understand how you described it, because we wouldn't have complied with the conditions, because that building doesn't have an elevator, it's in terrible shape, there's no, if you walk through the building, it's horrible, and that there's no way we could do, or could we attract anyone to come into that establishment and envision what we're doing. And furthermore, I'm putting up over $1 million to begin with, with our lender, and we have conditions before they can even open and the money gets released, of approval of plans, permits, proper licenses, before that money's going to get funded. So I can assure you, we are both on the same side, and for, with my lack of understanding of the actual law of how that could happen, as a layman in that respect, I don't see how that could possibly happen.
Okay.
And that, since you opened the door, that leads me to look at your site plan. And when I look at this site plan, on the first floor, I see, I see the kitchen, the offices, I see a small coffee pub, then I see an open dance floor below, and then I see a bar. And then when I go to the second floor downstairs, there's a dance floor, there's a banquet, there's a bar, there's a disco, there's another bar. And so, my question would be, is the coffee pub going to be the only supper club portion of this, of this whole entire building?
No, sir. Upstairs is an entire restaurant with seating. I'm sorry, there are two floors to the property, and that there's a full kitchen upstairs, full bar, complete, and the seating happens to still be intact, albeit it'll all be ripped out and redone.
It's 125 seating.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. And so that, you may be looking at the second floor, I mean, the first floor there, which is going to have to be renovated as well. And again, I go back to what the staff, and maybe staff could be of some help to me, we have to comply with what the regulations are to the code. To be able to get this to open, it has to look right, be right, have the proper permits, have the proper entrance, exits, all of the other things that comply with this. So that, I'd like to go back and say that historically in the city, and from what I've done, I'd like to say that what I have put on that property and the capital investment we put there and with the tenants we've attracted is not consistent with some of the current concerns you're bringing up, though I see that they're very realistic because there are other people in the city that have done those things.
Yeah, and what had happened is typically, is the businesses that have been there in the past have opened with a good intent of servicing those folks in the neighborhood. But again, it's all market-driven, and when you get to the point where nobody's coming in for the nice dinners, then you're going to, and, you know, you open the door... going to, and, you know, you opened the door and said 24-hour use, now you're going to, you're going to, you're going to, like we say in my neighborhood, you're going to pump up the volume.
Well, sir...
Which means, which means that, that you'll probably rent the bottom out to just about anybody that wants to come in there with a party. And that's been, that's been the history of that. I don't think the Port Tac did that, but businesses subsequent to that, that's what happened. They start off quiet, and then the next thing you know, there it is. And then it always makes it into the news.
Well, you're certainly welcome to create the conditions that would satisfy you, to make you comfortable, but that certainly is not what we jointly have represented here this evening.
I think that's what we were trying to do. I think that's what Commissioner Quinn was trying to do.
Mr. Mann, I think the application to me now is a little misleading because had I not asked you the hours of operation, I was assuming by the letter of your justification letter signed by Mr. Levitt, that the majority of business was going to be done between 5:00 p.m. and 11:00 p.m. So I assumed, along with my Spanish Oaks neighbors, assumed that it would be closing at 11:00 p.m. So unfortunately, without them, without the Spanish Oaks neighborhood knowing your full intent, I cannot move forward with this item without either a neighborhood meeting of some sort or denying it right here. Because they are under the assumption, and these people in Spanish Oaks understand, have lived there forever, their understanding is that a nice supper club is coming into their neighborhood, not a 24-hour operation. And I would not be doing a good job in my good faith for my neighborhood to vote for this item with this condition.
Commissioner Quinn, can I suggest then that maybe the applicant conduct a meeting? I'm assuming that did not occur, is that correct?
That is correct.
I know the Spanish Oaks has actually, because that's the most impacted neighborhood, they have an annual, a monthly board meeting in their clubhouse. And perhaps you can make the pitch to them. I'm not sure that many of them would be that concerned about it, you know, providing, you know, dinner and cocktails or whatever at a later hour. I think the issue is, is it going to be a 24-hour slot joint or a nightclub banquet thing that, you know, is going to compete with, you know, but I know that you have a built-in business there, and my suggestion would be maybe the appropriate thing, Commissioner Quinn, that you had suggested, is that they get together with, and perhaps hold a meeting and invite the Spanish Oaks people or try to coordinate it through their monthly meeting that they have in their clubhouse. Because I've heard over and over again that the people who live there would love to be able to go right outside the gate or actually walk over there, have a nice dinner and walk home. I think it's a bit unrealistic to, in my mind, to have a restaurant and require you to absolutely shut down at 11:00 o'clock. And in fact, one of my feelings about Las Vegas is it used to be a late-night place where you go to get dinner, and every place closes at 10:00 o'clock. On the other hand, I think the issue is people don't want it to be a 4:00 a.m., you know, disco. So certainly somewhere in the between would be, I think, some solutions for you all.
Well, certainly, we'd have no, we'd be happy to go visit with the neighbors, but I've done that on five occasions with them since I acquired the property. And that what we get is an explanation of what we're doing. And that I think we would say the same things to them as we're saying to here. They'll have more, they will have more questions, and they'll ask about those things. And so what I'm trying to get to is if we have a meeting with them and we put in abeyance for a moment, this particular vote, and we come back to you next month and we say we've had a meeting, what would you like to get back from that meeting, or what would you like to have happen that's a little bit different than what is happening this evening, so that I can have some direction, so that when we come back, that the concerns that you have...
I don't think they know what you're doing. They live right there. All I'm saying is that that would be the opportunity to let the people who live around there know what it is that you're doing. My sense is, if you're going to do what you intend to do, that they would be in full agreement with it. And then we can have kumbaya. You know, that's my...
But I mean, and this is my position on, every item that comes before this planning commission does not automatically rise to go hold a public meeting. I hear it so often, "Let's go have another public meeting, let's go have another public meeting." I believe developers owe it to us to try and reach out to neighbors, whether that's a public meeting or not. These meetings are public meetings, and if people want to express their dissatisfaction, they can. There are other items that are more complex, that do require the developer taking time to go meet with the neighbors, but that's here and there. I think there's some issues here that haven't been answered for us while you've met staff's basic requirements for approving a restaurant, and this was a restaurant, but you're asking for a use permit for supper club that does require some other things. What you haven't brought to us is projected elevations. What are you going to do with the building? Is it going to be painted? If it's not sprinkled, is it going to be sprinkled? Those are the, those are the issues that I think are critical to us approving a special use permit with all those conditions. Because otherwise, we're going to approve this, and like the applicant was saying, "Well, they think it's going to be 24 hours, they're going to live off the gaming." If this 17,000-foot building can survive off five, the revenue from five slot machines in this economy, we ought to put them in every building in Las Vegas. But it isn't going to happen. That's not even going to come close. And so I'd like to know what kind of restaurant we're getting. It's a special use permit. What kind of history the applicant has in running a restaurant? I mean, architect, you know, may have eaten at a restaurant at Mandalay Bay doesn't make him a restaurateur. May have talked to a chef, doesn't make him a restaurateur. If they've got five other restaurants that they operate, then that's, to me, critical information about us approving a use permit. Otherwise, you know, it's a, okay, you want to open a restaurant and you'd like a supper club, and based on that information, I can't support it.
Mr. Chairman, I could just...
I think we beat this dog about as much as we can beat it.
I want to give a little bit of direction before we move. You asked the question, what would they want? I would concur with the chairman. If you meet with the neighbors, it would be probably appropriate, and I think when it comes back here, I would like to see, and I know that Commissioner Quinn would too, a landscape plan, show us what you're going to do with, because I know the site is fairly deficient at this time, and as the chairman said, color schemes, that sort of thing. Give us an idea and give the neighbors an idea of what it's going to look like. And in my view, if you do what I think you want to do, I think everybody would be very happy with this.
I think I clearly understand what you'd like, and so if I could ask you, rather than voting tonight, to put it in abeyance for us, to give us an opportunity to go back, visit with the neighbors, and provide you with drawings and a more detailed description of the menu, concept, colors, elevations, and so forth, we'd be happy to do that.
And that might be appropriate for Mr. Levitt, maybe back in the country, maybe he could, you know, join us and explain...
Certainly.
...his perspective as well. If we hold this, it would be held till March 25th. That's the, that's the earliest date it can get on the agenda if there are motion.
And Mr. Mann, outside of notifying my councilwoman about the meeting, I personally would like to attend, and I know Commissioner Goines would like to attend. So my motion will be that we hold this for, is it 30 days, Chairman?
March 25th.
To March 25th, and that, in that timeframe, you have a, we have a neighborhood meeting and notify all of Spanish Oaks because they're very, very active in what goes on out there. So thank you, sir. That's my motion.
There's a motion. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is held till March 25th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now we go to item eight, VAC 360979, applicant owner, Caroline's Court LLC, to vacate a 20-foot public sewer easement generally located on the northwest corner of El Capitan and Durango Drive.
Mr. Chairman, this vacation was required as part of the condition of approval for site development review, SDR 20496. This item is in conformance with Title 18 requirements, and staff does recommend approval.
Thank you. Good evening.
James Lopez, 5096 West Post Road, on behalf of the applicant, we've read the conditions of approval and respectfully request.
And you're in agreement with all of them?
Yes.
All right. This was advertised a public hearing. You're going to be here, wish to speak on this item. Seeing no one close to public hearing, Commissioner Ellsworth?
Yes, Commissioners, I've looked this over. I have no opposition to it, and I think it's a good, for their intentions, and I'd move for approval unless there's any comments that the Commissioners would like to make.
There's a motion for approval. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is approved, and that is...
Goes forward to City Council on March 17th.
Okay. Item nine, VAC 36980, applicant owner, Caroline's Court, to vacate a 10-foot wide and a 30-foot wide public drain easement generally located on the northwest corner of El Capitan and Durango.
Mr. Chairman, this vacation was required as part of site plan development review, SDR 20496. It's in compliance to all of Title 19, our Title 18 requirements. Staff recommends approval.
Good evening.
James Lopez, 5096 West Post Road, on behalf of the applicant, we've read the conditions and respectfully request approval.
And you're in agreement with all conditions, right?
We are.
Thank you. Commissioner Ellsworth? This was advertised a public hearing, and we wish to speak on this item. Please come forward. Seeing no one close to public hearing. Commissioner Ellsworth?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion for approval of item number nine, VAC 36980.
There's a motion for approval. Please cast your vote. And that is approved.
Council, 317.
And that will go on to City Council on 317.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, on your director's business item, unfortunately, Mr. Perico had an emergency and will not be able to be here this evening, and so we feel he's the appropriate one to make this report, and so we will not be giving that report this evening.
So that'll be, we will go ahead and hold that to a future date?
Yes.
And you'll re-notify us?
It'll be on your next, it'll be on your next agenda, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Now we go to item 11, citizens' participation. Public comment during that portion of the agenda must be...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, we'll need to vote on having that obeyed to the next item.
Can I, can we have a motion with regards to the abeyance?
I'll move for an abeyance as requested.
Okay. There's a motion for abeyance. Please cast your vote. And that is approved. Now we're back to citizens' participation. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless the subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come forward to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject may be limited.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North, 19th Street. Some months ago, the tire store at the corner of Stewart and Lamb came before this council, and I don't even remember what it was for, but there was conditions placed upon that. Number one, they were going to clean up the siding, they were going to take all the tires that were piled around there and get rid of those, and they were going to clean up the dumpster and close the gates on that thing. They got the approval, and they didn't do any of the stuff. I asked any of the commissioners here, "Drive by and look at the place." And this is one of the things that really irritate me, when they come before the commission and promise to do these things in, subject to their approval. They get the approval, and then they don't do any of it. And I get really angry at this.
Are you saying they might have misled us or lied to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Lie.
We have long memories on those items. If there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.